Good afternoon, commissioners. Hello, Portland, and welcome everyone to the final meeting of the Independent District Commission. Today is Monday, August 21st, and we will be meeting from 6:00 H.M. virtually via Zoom and in person here at the Portland Building. Before we get started, I will hand things over to city staff to go over our Zoom meetings.
Thank you. So this meeting is the end of the copy of the recording on the American Sign Language website under past events. Then we have post captioning in the American Sign Language available. You can find those captions on Zoom Control Panel. It's the access interpretation. You can click on the globe icon up bottom right of your screen. Commissioners, this is your reminder to change your chat setting to everyone. So folks listening along can follow along with our conversation. And then committee members, today we have the Q and A feature available on Zoom. It's up to the bottom left in the Zoom Control Panel. Feel free to put in questions or comments as we have our meeting tonight. If you have additional questions or thoughts, please feel free to submit those to our email districtcommission@PortlandOregon@. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Before I preview our agenda this evening, I want to welcome back to our meeting Lindley Reese from the City Attorney's Office, who will be providing support to us in this final phase of our work. Thank you for joining us again, Lindley. Thank you. So after we move through commission business, we will transition directly to voting on the district plan. During this portion of our meeting tonight, we will review the plan's components, including the final district map, the numbering of the districts, and review of the legal description. From there, we will hold a roll call vote to formally adopt the district plan. As our terms as commissioners ends, when we officially adopt the plan, following this vote, we will have time for commissioners to share final thoughts and reflections before officially adjourning this meeting of the IDC. After that, we'll take a five-minute break, and when we return, we will be rejoining, we will be joining the meeting of the Government Transition Advisory Committee. And we will be discussing lessons learned and highlight important upcoming opportunities for GTAC with regard to the transition. And we will conclude our meeting this evening with a discussion on priorities for future redistricting efforts, as well as documenting the process of this commission's work and the rationale, which will be components of the final report. Any questions before we begin? Hearing none, over to you, Autumn.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Go for the next slide. So in terms of commission business for this evening, we have no excused absences. And in terms of the minutes, we have the minutes from August 19th prepared. The minutes for the August 16th and the 21st meeting, there's a slight typo in the slide. But today's and this evening's meeting, you'll be adjourned, and so it won't be able to approve them, but they will be posted to the transition website as unapproved summary meeting notes for the meeting record, and that includes the second half of tonight's meeting that will actually be a G, that will be formally a GTAC meeting. So this evening, we're going to have a vote on a vote to approve the August 9th meeting summary. Are there any proposed revisions or questions around the minutes from the 9th? Okay. Seeing no proposed revisions, those are approved. And so before we get started, we're going, wait for it up. So as the next stage, as we move into the voting for the adoption of the district plan, before we actually adopt that plan, we're going to walk through the components as a comprehensive plan, spend a bit of time, and we'll walk through the map, the numbering, both of which this this body voted on last week to approve for its inclusion, as well as the legal description, and together those from a plan. So we'll see those. I'll put on the floor a potential motion, and we'll seek a, seek approval of that motion and a second. And then if that moves, and if that is approved, we will move to voting. Are there any questions on the process? If they arise, you can always, always raise your hand to pause them. So we'll start with the map that is displayed right now. So this is the map that was that this body approved last week, reflecting four districts. One spanning, of course, the east, one more in the north, one in the far, the west, and bridging over into the southeast. And one more focused on the southeast, and there's a link to that map in the chat right now. We'll move to, are there any questions or concerns of this slide, the map, any points of clarification at this point? Commissioner Valdini? Sorry, Lindley.
Just want to check, I saw Sophia posted a map in the chat. The number looked a little different than the one that is on the slide. Could I just confirm those are the same?
Set a link at the bottom, 92, sorry, 192992.
They, they do look the same to me, but I'm double clicking as well.
Yeah, they, they look the same to me.
Okay. And so it is map number 192992, for the record. Also, sorry, Commissioner Valdini. Moving to the left. All right. So we are going to move to the next slide, and then this will walk through the numbering. To confirm, so District 1 is the district that spans the furthest east. District 2 spans most of the north, northern area on the map. District 3 is south, to the south of that district. And then District 4 is the furthest west. Are there any questions or points of clarification for this portion of the district plan? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the next one. So we're going to walk through, this will be an overview. So these are posted to the website. We are not going to read them out as they are legal descriptions. There, it's a technical document, but these are the descriptions that will, that are planned to accompany the map. So they're a description for District 1. We'll move to District 2. District 3. And District 4. So these are currently, this version of the legal descriptions are currently posted on the IDC website. But I will pause, see if there are any questions or points of clarification on any of the descriptions. And Commissioner Fleishman.
That Lindley may be able to answer. If there's any dispute or discrepancy between the map as presented in these legal descriptions, which, which one takes precedence over the other?
I, I can answer that. I believe that the motion that Autumn will be proposing includes language to make it clear that the map controls over the legal description.
Correct. So I am going to read out a motion, and so it would allow for minor technical corrections in the legal description to be made to align to the map, as the map does take precedent. So if we're all ready, the motion I would seek on the floor to adopt the district plan, recognizing that the legal description is a technical document and should conform to the map included in the district plan itself. Therefore, the adoption of the plan this evening allows for technical correction, should they be, any technical corrections, should they be identified in the future? Is there a motion on the floor? That's consistent with that language.
So.
Good.
Can I?
Commissioner Wise with the motion, and Commissioner Chisholm with the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Wise made the motion, Commissioner, I hear Chisholm, seconded, okay, perfect. And the motion, as stated, was to vote to adopt the plan, the district plan, recognizing that the legal description is a technical document and should conform to the map included in the district plan itself. Therefore, adoption of the plan this evening allows for technical correction, should they be identified, technical correction to the description, should they be identified in the future? And is there any opposition to that motion? Okay. And seeing none, we will move, we will move to a roll call vote to adopt the district plan. Okay, so just making sure I have everyone here. Commissioner Manavis? Commissioner Kamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Siegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Judd?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorente?
Aye.
Commissioner Chisholm?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise? Commissioner Wise, I think, I didn't hear him, no. Thank you. Commissioner Valdini?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxena?
Aye.
Commissioner Lumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fleishman?
Aye.
Okay. The plan is adopted with unanimous support. Okay. Congratulations. All right, so at this point, we have a formally adopted district plan, and I would open the floor. Sophia, I think we can take this slide down when you're ready, but we'll open the floor to any reflections, anything you'd like to share more generally with, with the city of Portland community. We'll just open the floor. So anyone who feels moved, please raise your hand. Commissioner Kamora, we'll start with you.
Oh, thank you. Now I have to remember to lower my hand before I start. I want to thank everyone. This process had been very, very rewarding. I was reluctant to join this group because I thought maybe that we would end up just kind of bickering at each other, but this has been a very thoughtful, respectful process, both from city staff, the commissioners, the, the public, as well as our consultants. And I want to mention both, thanks to Commissioner Hanson, and although we, we lost her early in the process, Commissioner Van Ness, I want to thank her too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Lorente, followed by Commissioner Fleishman and Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Lorente?
I just want to say that I really believe that this commission has done such thoughtful and dedicated work to deliver this district plan that is founded by the voter-approved criteria, and adheres to state and federal laws. It's informed by data and community input, and I really believe, in my view, that this map creates the best opportunity for real representation on our next city council. I think this is a map that we, as a commission and the communities of Portland, can be proud of. And yeah, it's been a privilege to work alongside all of you, and I'm very excited for this district plan to welcome more voices to City Hall. So kudos to everyone.
Thank you. Co-Chair Lorente, Commissioner Fleishman, followed by Commissioner Saxena, Commissioner Fleishman.
Thank you. Like Commissioner Kamora, I wanted to recognize some of our fellow commissioners, and in particular, Commissioner Hanson. She served as an alternate, served the entire time. Didn't get the honor and opportunity to vote this plan in, but was as much responsible for the really good work as any of us who did get the honor of having a vote. She certainly had a say in the matter, and, and I wanted to personally thank her because that, that also is kind of a model of how each one of us stepped up and volunteered and participated. And although her name won't be in the roll call, she's certainly been an integral member. So thank you, Commissioner.
You're here, you're here.
Thank you. Commissioner Saxena, followed by Commissioner Chisholm.
I want, don't unmute. Yes, okay. Usually I fail to unmute myself, so. I want to express my gratitude to Portland voters and the members of the Charter Commission, who provided us with an incredible roadmap that helped us hone our values while also giving us plenty of room to make our own way. And I think it's fair to say that we understood the assignment. I want to thank Sophia, Autumn, Katie, Jamie, the brilliant folks with Flow Analytics, and all of you who supported us in this process. You were supportive, patient, generous with your tremendous expertise, and created the container within which we could do the work we needed to do in the short time in which we needed to do it. So many thanks to the city of Portland, all of our consultants. And finally, I am so appreciative of all of our, my fellow commissioners, including and especially Commissioner Hanson, who also was my ride several times for that carpooling experience, which was really valuable. You're brilliant, you're all brilliant, compassionate, thoughtful, and plappably civil, even when we disagreed, occasionally hilarious. I made new friends, and I'm going to miss working with all of you. I'm proud that we were unanimous in the things that mattered. We created a district for East Portland, ensuring that there will always be three city council members from East Portland. In the whole history of Portland, there have only been two. There will likely be more city council members from North Portland and the Central East side because of this work. I'm incredibly proud that we had a part in creating a structure that will ensure greater representation from all parts of the city, and not just the fanciest zip codes, or as we learn, the fanciest census tracts. Was the process perfect? Of course not. Is everyone happy? Definitely not. We were never going to make everyone happy. Did we make things more just and equitable than they are now? I, I think we did. And it's very fashionable right now to claim that Portland is in a downward spiral, and I disagree with that diagnosis, but I'm really proud to stand with all of you, elbow-deep in the inevitably bureaucratic work of being part of the solution, and not complaining from the sidelines. So I just want to thank all of you. Because I thought of the extemporaneous person I've put it down. And hopefully delivered it in a succinct and animated way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chisholm, followed by Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins.
Yeah, I also just want to express my thanks and gratitude to all of you. You know, the, we all started, I, I don't know how many of us knew each other before we started here. I know, I didn't know, I think anybody, we met one or two of you before, but we were appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, thrown together in a room, a Zoom room, mostly beginning. And, and I will say that this group of 13, 14, 15 of us has been not just the most diverse group I've ever been part of, truly in every possible way, right? There's our experiences, our backgrounds, and where we live in the city, but has been the most effective group I've ever been part of. And I think that says a lot, that those two things go together. And I had a chance to run into the mayor at a social setting over the weekend and got a chance to thank him, putting us all together. And he expressed that he had heard how effective we'd all been working together. And I had a chance to tell him that, that this was truly an extraordinary group. And I was saying off-camera before the meeting started that I really do think this is a group that could be brought together for another purpose another time, whether for the city or for some other purpose, because it is a group that even when we disagreed, and we really, really disagreed, we did so respectfully and with kindness and with curiosity, and it's just, I'm so proud to be working with all of you, and I am sad it's over, but I hope to work together soon on something else.
Maybe work for you.
I am not running for office.
Oh, I thought you were launching Portland's next great startup. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins.
Well, I just wanted to echo everything that's already been said in terms of how meaningful the experience has been, and how great it's been to get to know all of you, all of my fellow commissioners through the process, because I also did not know anyone when we started this journey, and it's been an amazing journey. And I wanted to also echo the thanks to all of the staff and all of the consultants, because they have worked tirelessly and spent their whole summer trudging around all over Portland to be in all these different locations and answering calls on weekends and after hours. And I really appreciate it. The folks at Flow have been amazing to work with. I just really wanted to thank them. And finally, for anybody who's listening on, on this Zoom tonight, or is going to tune into this later, this has been an incredibly rewarding experience as a volunteer. And I encourage everybody out there to look for these opportunities to have a chance to help shape things that are happening in our community, because it's a great, it's just a great experience. So I just would encourage everybody to throw their hats in the ring going forward, because we need a lot of diverse voices helping the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Coach. Coach Judd?
Yeah, I did owe for the opportunity to work with each, with each and every one of you. It's been a very special time. And would also like to thank the numerous folks who supported us at the centers that we went to. It gave us an excellent opportunity to be out in the community and engaged. All the citizens that came out to voice their concerns, their priorities, and encouraging and even the, 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 the challenges that this commission was going to face. Appreciate all of that. You know, it's, I think it's a, it's a gift to be able to be in a position where you can be of service to others. I think the commissioners took that challenge to heart and really showed to sort of listen, to be engaged, to be present, and to be respectful for all those who came out to share with us. So even the, the lighting crew, sorry, the, the audio crew who came out with us to make sure that we could be heard and could hear others. The facilitators, Autumn, thank you for hanging in there with us as well. I know you're getting paid to do this, but like. Really appreciate you and all the time you spend with us. We miss you today, but always appreciate your presence. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can reflect, it really has been an honor to work with you, and truly one of the highlights of my career. So thank you for allowing me to be with you. Commissioner Siegel.
I was saying that I could say different, but I really wanted to thank the, the six co-chairs. I mean, we wouldn't be where we are without all your help, the time you spent on all this. Sometimes cajoling, but always with a good sense of humor. And anyway, I really appreciate it. After working 42 years with and for governments, it's the most fun I've had. And one of these days, when it comes to legal descriptions, I want to find the true point again.
I mean, everyone's laughing so much, they can't even, oh, okay, wait, does anyone have any other reflections? Commissioner Siegel? Stand up. I didn't realize. This isn't it. Music. Stand up. Height, just truly the gift. All right, are there any other reflections before, before we move to the next part of the agenda? And we, of course, you'll have the rest of the meeting to share some of your insights with the Government Transition Advisory Committee, which I have been told has met a quorum. And so just wanted to note that their meeting has also been noticed on the Government Transition Advisory Committee website as well. So, but they do have a quorum between in-person attendees and online. Commissioner Hanson?
Just, first of all, yeah, echoing all of the gratitude, I have learned a tremendous amount from every single person in this room, and I am just, it has been an absolute honor to be part of this process. And I also just wanted to uplift once more the voices of all of the Portlanders who submitted all of the comments and feedback, who showed up at hearings, who organized other people to show up at hearings, who submitted like over a thousand, like a thousand public comments just in like a month. Like every, everyone who has been so involved with this process that absolutely, we would not be where we were without the voters deciding that this was a priority last fall, trusting us with this process, and then giving us the feedback and opinions that we needed to be able to do our best to sympathize everything to make, make that decision. So in, in addition to the gratitude for every person in this room and all of the staff and everyone who made it possible, just want to really uplift that as well. And as Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins says, if this looks fun, sign up for the next one. This is your opportunity.
I mean, can attest, it is very fun. Um, so I wanted to note that Lindley from the City Attorney's Office will be leaving following this, following, following the adjournment of the IDC's formal meeting. So I wanted to know if there were any questions before she does leave, following the vote. Okay. Well, Commissioner Buzzman, actually.
Thanks, Sophia. I, I, before we adjourn, could, could, Lindley, could you review ways in which the work of this commission could be potentially nullified or negated? Just so we're clear, I think we're all walking away thinking we have established a firm basis for moving forward that is defensible and unchangeable. And I'm proud to have participated in that, but I'm also, like any other work that you're leaving, wondering, could this work be in any way undone? And I'd like, I'd love to hear some assurance from you that says any, you know, nothing can't be undone, but it's, it's highly unlikely that there could be a way that this could be undone, at least from a legal perspective.
I think, I think what I can say is that this group clearly followed the law, state law, federal law. You followed the criteria. You took the steps required under the Charter to meet, to involve the community, and to take a vote. I don't think there's anything else this group could have done. I, I'm really proud of this group, even though I stepped in awfully late, but I don't, I don't really think there's, there's anything else this group could have done. So great, great work, all of you.
Thank you. And are there any other questions? Before we adjourn? Okay. So seeing, seeing none, we'll formally adjourn this meeting of the Independent District Commission. However, the Government Transition Advisory Committee is still, still in session. So when we take a break, we'll resume in five minutes at 6:37. And when we rejoin, we'll rejoin with the Government Transition Advisory Committee, and then we'll have a session there. It'll be primarily structured around question and answers, but it'll be your opportunity for discussion. Beyond that, we will move into a broader, kind of more like intra-commission discussion among these members around just continuing discussion around reflections, priorities, and any, anything. around just continuing discussion around your reflections, priorities, and any, anything you'd like to share with the staff before we end for the night. So we'll resume about five minutes at six thirty-seven. We have the Government Transition Advisory Committee, and I know that having a joint session, essentially, joint meetings can be a little, it's a little odd. But I thought it might be helpful if, I think there are seven members of the, I'm going to call it the GTAC going forward. It's an acronym, but it's easier. So I was wondering if members of the GTAC, I believe there are seven in attendance, if you could so I know that some of you have your computers, I think all of you actually are logged into Zoom. If you wouldn't mind raising your virtual hand and maybe just stating your name and maybe like just a brief intro, just so folks can kind of get to know you, associate names with faces. And then I'll just kind of call on you. And then just as a reminder to everyone, the purpose of this portion of the meeting will be to discuss lessons learned around community engagement, voter education, priorities, and be able to transition that, share that knowledge with the GTAC, which whose purview and scope includes the transition, right? And so just a little bit of a handoff here. And the commission is also welcome to your question and questions and invites them. So that's how we'll structure the discussion. So if you have those questions too, we'll, after the roundup introductions, ask if there are any questions to start us off. Does that work? Okay, so we'll start with committee member Benson. Follow my committee member Randall.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Leah Benson. She's a pronouns. I'm the incoming co-chair of GTAC, live in Northeast Portland, and I'm so grateful for the work that everyone has done. Great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Randall and committee member Carol. But correct me if I'm wrong on any mispronunciations and so.
Hi, my name is Amy Randall. I'm coming, coming to you all from Northeast Portland, and I bring experience in campaign and electoral politics to the GTAC. And I am Oregonian and spent a bunch of time in the Bay Area as well. Really impressed by what you guys did here, was kind of emotional watching this map pass and understand that we're going to be able to represent more of the city. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Oh, yeah, sorry, cut you off. Zach Curl, he/him pronouns, and member of the Montevilla neighborhood and had the privilege to see multiple of you at the in-person public hearings and just incredibly impressed with, with all of you. As a former policy advisor for Mayor Wheeler and somebody who's really interested in effective governance, it's inspiring to see all of you conduct effectively. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll have what is it, committee member America Meadow, followed by committee member Max Magana Pablo.
Hello, Jose America Snelly, he/him pronouns. First, I want to say thank you for all the work you're doing. You guys have done so much more than we have and already feels like we've are overheads with everything we have to do. Maybe you guys have been at there already for way longer. So I really appreciate all the work you've done. I've seen you guys not just in person, because I was at a bunch of the listening sessions, but also I've had Commissioner Kimora and other commissioners come talk to different groups I'm part of. And I really appreciated your commitment to make sure everyone wasn't, as many people was involved in the process as possible. And I'm looking forward to what we do here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Magana Pablo.
Thank you.
Yeah, Pablo, I'm in East Portland, doing community outreach work and mostly in early learning. So thank you for opening the space up for me and also representing East Portland.
Thank you. Committee member Hyam, followed by committee member Santana, Ben Hertzberg.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Juliette Hyams. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm so sorry that I can't attend in person tonight. I'm actually in the state of Washington on business. I wish I had been able to watch more of the IDC's meetings, but I watched a handful of them enough to just be filled with admiration for the incredible intricate detail you have all seemed to synthesize in your heads and come to an amicable and well-supported decision. My background is in city management and neighborhood advocacy, and thanks again for meeting with us.
Thank you. Committee members, Santana. One second, your audio.
Okay.
A second. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. My name is Juanita Santana, and I live in North Portland. And I just want to congratulate you all for the work that you accomplished. It was very it was a real gift to be here today and see your enthusiasm and you, you know, your relief to be done with the work that you were doing. So we have a lot to learn from you. And I want to thank you for the invitation to be here and to listen from you and to learn from your experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Hertzberg, followed by committee member Hertzberg, followed by committee member Wood, and then I believe there's committee member Habenet in the room as well. Committee member Hertzberg.
Hi, I'm Joe Hertzberg, he/him. I'm delighted that we're doing this and that we can learn from your sort of trail breaking work on this. I live in the Selwood neighborhood, which is one of the neighborhoods that was in play. You didn't make the decision that I would have liked, but I really, really admire the process that you've done and your dedication to doing this. And I look forward to learning from you and hopefully being able to amplify the work that you've done already.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Amy Wood. And, you know, to echo what many of my other committee members have said, we really, really appreciate the work that you did. I attended an in-person session that you conducted and have watched many of the online sessions. And you had such a huge job. So thank you so much for the dedication and the, the long, long hours that you put into it. And I greatly look forward to learning from you as we take the baton and hopefully help finish the work of transition. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sophia, authority for committee member.
My name is Lori Heffley. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the outgoing chair for GTAC. And congratulations to all of you. I like Amy felt a little emotional listening to you put that vote through, because I know what a huge task it's been. I've attended a couple of your meetings and just in awe of the work that you did, the complexity of what you pulled together with all of the community input that you gathered, meetings were contentious, and I thought you handled them with such grace. So it's your, I think there's a lot for us to learn from you. I've already been out in the community doing a few engagements, and there's lots of questions. So I'm really looking forward to learning from you and being able to go out there and represent the great work that you did. So thank you.
Thank you. By the way, by my count, we have eleven members. So thank you for taking the time this evening to join us. All right, so I think we'll start by opening the floor of any questions from GTAC members. And if members of the IDC would like to weigh in, we have about, about half an hour or so in the agenda to allow for questions, so just be thoughtful about the amount of time, but we'll take them forward. So any questions from the GTAC? Let's start with committee members, Hertzberg, followed by Benson. Have one. Second, and then Hyam.
I don't know that this is the best one to start with, but, but I went to several of your hearings. And I went to the one in my neighborhood, which was quite different, because everybody in the room was directly affected by the process. And, and I wonder if you can compare those, sort of, I guess abstractly. The question is, how different is it when you're addressing a group that is directly impacted by what you're talking about versus asking for sort of general input about something that, you know, affects other neighborhoods?
So for this one, I'll ask, we're going to go question by question, but maybe we have two to three folks tried from the IDC, up to two to three folks weigh in per question. And so we'll do it that way, that works. So would anyone from the IDC like to weigh in? Commissioner Bleschman, and then Commissioner Valdini.
Ron, making sure there wasn't another hand. Good, great, yeah. Okay. So I, I think that that is a good place to start with, with questions and I think that one of the things that I learned was that we didn't have the we didn't necessarily have the wherewithal or were able to actually engage everyone in the community. So in some ways, anybody who showed up was much more invested in the process than a kind of citizens at large. And I think we, and we've discussed this in the IDC, we need to do a lot better job of reaching folks, for example, people who have never voted, but had, you know, could have voted. Youth who are the future voters, just to give kind of two examples, the third one, non-English speaking citizens of the city. So in some ways, we already, it was a kind of a skewed sample of who came. But the other piece I reflected on was even though kind of we, we were bound and we were committed to kind of having geographic dispersal of, of our hearings and potential districts is the, a challenge of citizens thinking themselves as citizens of the entire city and bringing those kinds of interests, or citizens whose interests went beyond kind of the geographic, you know, my neighborhood, to I'm interested in better transportation for the whole city. And I think that I think those are things that are worth keeping in mind, because as I participated, I thought one of the challenges we had was that the community of interest was interpreted as a geographic term more than kind of a, an identity term. So, you know, you could be a public transportation rider and have a community of interest defined by that or language or other kinds of interest. But yet, most of our hearings were based on the notion that the community equals geography. So those are kind of my reflections of what came up. So in some way, everybody who came had kind of came with a, with a stake in a particular question, supposed to a stake in furthering democracy in the city, which is, I think, what we had to reconcile. That was our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleishman. We'll go to Commissioner Valdini, followed by Commissioner Judd, and then Commissioner Vincent Robinson. Commissioner Valdini.
I think that's a, it's a really good question, and it really hits home with me, because as a, as also a resident of Selwood and being in that neighborhood meeting and, you know, seeing my own neighbors and friends a little tense, a little upset. It really was a very different environment than the bigger, more neutral community meetings. But I think the, I certainly don't know if I handled it correctly, but something that I learned during that and that I I think I can recommend is to just be as honest and transparent as possible about where you are personally on it. So I think at first I was like, am I a politician? Do I need to stay like kind of neutral and above the fray here and separate myself and and it just, it felt so much more, I felt so much more connected and just more useful, more effective, when I could say, here's where I am. Now tell me where you are. Tell me what you're thinking about. Tell me what concerns you have, and let's meet in the middle. Let's really talk this through, rather than me saying, you know, just, I can't tell you where I am. I can't tell you what I'm thinking. So I would, for me personally, being honest and transparent as much as possible, particularly in the more heated meetings, that really worked for me, but it might not work for everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Judd?
Yeah. I was like, John, I appreciate the questions. It's a little bit of a ruse, just because I think initially, when we go to the communities, just what all these communities will be directly affected, we had several conversations with the local community as well. And then we had, if I recall, we had at least two conversations. One virtual, it felt like we joined the meetings, the small group virtually, and then we attended in person. But I think the the most interesting thing that I can recall about that meeting was being a listener and listening to the various points made. There was a lot of counterpoints made for why, for which map we were in favor of. And I think that not only was it intriguing to hear the history, but also to hear the numbers that a lot of folks brought to justify. Because there was one lady, I won't remember her name now, she came with like voting stats. I mean, that's the sign of a very engaged population and the civic engaged population down there in Selwood, so. So we did appreciate the informed preparedness of the community down there and being able to listen to them and have them have these open and transparent conversations amongst themselves. I mean, that was the, that was the most important aspect of being down there, just hearing, listening, and seeing the conversation amongst the citizens there.
Thank you, Coach Judd. Commissioner Vincent Robinson, I think you'll probably close us out for this one.
I just wanted to say that we, granted, as Commissioner Fleishman said, that our sample was limited. There were a lot of voices that we didn't hear from. And I know that all the work that'll continue going forward with the Charter, they'll be trying to build on those voices and extend the reach of, of participation and transparency. But one of the things I found very interesting was that we heard a lot of feedback about the role of a neighborhood as a community of common interest from a lot of the folks who came to public hearings or provided comment. But the representation of neighborhoods was very uneven. So we had some neighborhoods that were very participatory in what was going on in terms of public comment opportunities, but there were a lot of neighborhoods we didn't hear a word from. I'm not sure that we even had, at least to our knowledge, had folks who lived in those neighborhoods at some of the opportunities to comment. So I would say there's a lot of opportunity there to try and build of greater participation across that, that set of opportunities that the neighborhoods provide. That's one of the things I, I would focus on going forward.
Thank you. And Chair Benson. Good question.
Thank you. Once again, I want to say thank you to everyone. It's been like a nice virtual love fest to be a part of here, which I think is worth calling out, because the process does inform the product, and all of this gives me so much hope about the map that was just passed. Thank you there. Definitely going to follow up with you, Sophia, to ask about, what do you think made this group work so well together? But it won't take our time now to do that. My question is instead going back to something that Commissioner Fleishman did bring up, talking about the broad category of hard-to-reach voters. In thinking about those hard-to-reach voters, what strategies that you used do you think were most effective, that you would recommend that we carry forth? Um, in thinking about those hard to reach voters, what strategies that you use do you think were most effective that you would recommend that we carry forth?
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Kimora, followed by Commissioner Siegel. And if anyone else would like to weigh in, just raise your hand. Commissioner Kimora?
I have to lower my hand first, otherwise I forget. Um. I think the most effective strategy, and I think all of the commissioners very well. Said this, it's your personal connection and your willingness to talk to smaller groups of people, not just. We had the eight meetings, but every commissioner met separately with smaller groups. And I think that willingness to make that commitment really helped us inform our choice, but also give us a much better handle on. The the public reaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners Siegel, then Commissioner Judd.
What Commissioner Kimura, uh, stated and. Commissioner, I think you raised a. Similar point in a couple of the good ones, remember, uh, meeting with the CCC. A little bit over a week ago. In terms of lessons learned and moving forward. The ten years is a good, it's a good ways away. So when, and before redistricting, uh, begins, there's a whole lot of education and more education. And more education that needs to occur. I think, uh, as Commissioner Fleishman, uh, mentioned that, uh, given the constraints of time. We didn't have the opportunity to go out and have some, uh, uh, foundation level, uh, information sessions. Or even just, uh, uh, districting 101. Uh, what is it and why you should care? Given the time, it can certainly be done, uh, whether it's by, uh. Future commissions or consultants serving the city, uh, what have you, but getting that information out there. And available is one thing. The other thing that, uh, Commissioner Kimura and I really agree on is taking the, uh. Taking the message to the people. Uh, so if you're, you're going to show up at, I hope, at, uh, uh. Meetings of social organizations, you'll be going into the churches. Uh, you might have a a booth outside of a grocery store or at a community event. I remember years ago and doing a downtown plan for the city of Tiger. We, uh, we had a roadshow where we, uh, asked people to volunteer kitchens. And we went to people's kitchens and we talked a lot and we listened a lot. But that was a way to get the word out to those who might not feel too comfortable. In coming to a city hall or a community center and raising their hand, uh, whether it's. For whatever reason. So going out and providing that opportunity for education and then taking it to the streets. To, uh, uh, really help deliver the message and get, uh, some informed input back.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Coach Judd?
Yeah, I would want to double down on this notion of taking it to the streets. I think, um, the most organized. One thread that we about it was. Working with organizations, able to organizations. These organizations are fairly organized. Uh, and they have infrastructure that support them. The challenge is, what about those citizens who don't participate? Uh, in that organized infrastructure. Uh, there are opportunities. Uh, to develop new types of community engagements. So that those underrepresented, those underheard voices, uh, are elevated. I think there's, uh, there needs to be some very intentional thought given to how to create that type of infrastructure. Uh, and we, and we heard several times in, um, our sessions where there are certain barriers that. Not intentionally, but, uh, they they create barriers for folks who may, uh, not have, uh, childcare. Uh, transportation needs, or they might need, uh, you know, just stipments to be able to come and participate. Uh, in civic engagement just because of the situations that, uh, they find themselves in. And so some intentional effort needs to be given to how do you remove those barriers so that? More members who are outside of that traditional legacy structure, uh, can participate specifically.
Thank you, Coach Judd. Um, we're gonna move to GTAC committee member Heffley for a question.
My question is around, uh, community input and accountability for that input. Um, I know even within our own meeting, we have a lot of questions about what happens to our input. And I get asked about it when I'm out in the community. What has, what happens to, we ask these questions. We're telling you thing, what happens? What would you want us to tell the community when we're out there, when they say, what happened to my input?
I'm just to clarify, is the question, what happened to my input during the IDC's?
Yes, sorry.
From the IDC process?
Uh, districting, yep.
Uh, we'll go, we'll start with Commissioner Chisholm and then go to Commissioner Valdini.
Uh, speaking only for myself, um. You know, I read every comment. Everything came in online. I read all of it. Uh, some of it was tedious, uh, uh, some of it was repetitive. There were clearly groups out there organizing and getting the same message sent over and over. Um, but even that gives you a sense of the strength of feeling. You know, I, the, our staff here put together a fantastic report summarizing it, um. That was two or three meetings ago where they presented that report, uh, and gave us a flavor of. You know, this, this and this number of people said, you know, had basically this idea versus that, you know, and so on and so forth. Uh, I I would say that it. For us, it it is a challenge because you can't do everything that everybody wants. And I made the case here several times. To the, my fellow commissioners here that we're here for a reason. Uh, we all have our own experiences, our own values, our own expertise, uh, and we have to bring that to bear as well. The mayor and the council appointed us for a reason. And the public input is critical, but it's not the only thing. We're not just counting up comments and then going with whatever. Whoever won the most comments, um, it's on a survey. Um, and so it's challenging, I think, to. Communicate that back to people. If we want to hear your feedback, it's not necessarily going to carry the day. Um, we're spending, you know, hundreds of hours, thousands of hours as a collective here. Uh, really wrestling with all these tough questions. And at some level, it all kind of goes into the the melting pot and we all grapple with it and. You know, we had to go up with one map, um, and, um, you have a much harder challenge. Lots of different things you're you're wrestling with, so. Good luck.
Uh, we'll go to Commissioner Valdini and then Commissioner Hanson, followed by Coach Judd.
I think there, there are two things, um. First is that I would want the community to know that we really did look at every map, like we really did. If. We took this so seriously, you know, like I've, I've, you know. I work in the university and, um, we take things pretty seriously, but I've never been on a committee that is this detail oriented and this, um. Thoughtful. So, you know, it's, I, no one should think that they were ignored or that we were flippant. Or it didn't pay attention to them. If we decided something that wasn't what someone wanted, we did so because. We thought it would be best for the city to go in a different direction. So I think to really bring that home to people that we we took this very seriously. The second point, and it's something that I encountered with the community, is that. Um, and I'm hoping GTAC will be able to do this. We need more voter education about what to expect from this new electoral system. Because I think sometimes voters are really worried about something happening about, about being underrepresented for their group. And I would try to convey, no, under this new electoral system, under the ranked choice multi-member, you're gonna be fine. It's very different than what we had before. It's gonna be okay. And there was, there's a lot of, yeah, I I couldn't console them because they could, they, you know, they didn't try, they don't know me, they didn't trust me. So. More voter education about what we're going to and the consequences of it and, you know. I hope that GTAC can can call on, you know, the universities or however we can help. Get this information across because like all the electoral system scholars in Portland, we know each other, we work together, and we were all really, really supportive. Of the charter passing. So we're all really excited to help, but it's, it was, it was hard for me. See how many voters just still aren't quite sure what we're getting into understandably because it's new and it's confusing. But if we can somehow get more information out that says, here's what's gonna happen. Don't be scared. It's gonna be okay. Um, that would be, I think, really helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before we go to Commissioner Hanson, I'm gonna take a pause and do a temperature check. Is there any opposition to continuing this discussion for extending it for about 10 minutes? Because we do have four more questions from the GTAC. No opposition? All right, but. We'll blend it into the next discussion in terms of reflections. Um, so Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Judd, will you close us out on this, this question before we do this next?
Well, yeah, I think the the one other thing I I think about with feedback and like how you, how you you make people know that you have heard their feedback. It's very much like a showing, not telling sort of thing, rather than like, yes, we have heard your feedback. And if I say that a hundred times, then it will be true. Instead of being like, no, actually, like as my fellow commissioners have said, in many ways. This map that we have approved is a direct result. So it's like this showing, not telling, because you can't necessarily convince someone with words. It's mainly with action, especially since it's like a bigger process of trust building. Um, but I want to touch with something that Commissioner Judd said a minute or two ago, and I think in terms of like informing GTAC's work. Like thinking about some of this feedback that like we got that we would love to pass on to you so that you would be able to like show the listening in a way that we just like couldn't. Things like offering more food or childcare at some of these hearings. I think that was a comment from one of the invited speakers at SCI at that hearing. Um, or you like, we have meeting people where they are and finding who the trusted leaders are in different communities. And figuring out what they need to disseminate this information to their communities, right? So, so it's kind of like finding these like people who people already trust, um. I think there's a huge opportunity. It will never be enough. Uh, and also I think there's some, some great opportunity that I think can build on, build on some of this stuff.
Thank you. Uh, and Coach Judd?
Let's add to those, you know, recent, uh, public record, keeping it and having it transparent to everybody. Just add to that, beware of. Uh, your own biases so that when you're having conversations with folks. That you're, uh, I would attempt to do is act as a listener for. Uh, someone was, was, well, would, I would necessarily disagree with or expressing a different view. Uh, not just in the the time that we had together, but then seeking time afterwards to further engage. To really hear and understand, not just what point they were making. What's, where's it coming from? What's, what, help me understand, help me get grounded. Uh, why you're saying things and where your perspective is coming from. Uh, I think that what happens then is. There's an internalization of that feedback that will then inform your thought process, right? Uh, but the only way that I think that you, that the one way to do that is to open yourself as a sponge, is to beware what your biases are. Seek opportunities to engage from that perspective, uh, and then be a very active listener, right? I think a lot of, uh, a lot of times we want to defend our stance. Sometimes we take stances of, well, I I've heard that before or. Uh, you know, we're in this position, so therefore, you know, I I should know. Um, suspend all of that and just be that person that you're having a conversation and you're just there to listen and. Thinking of not what point you need to make next, what question you could ask next, get further understanding. I think that's the best way to internalize what's being said so that it informs and influences the decisions that I think about the board.
Thank you. Uh, we'll take the next question from, uh, committee member Hayam, followed by committee member Madonna Pablo. Then committee member Gomero Casanelli and Senten. Uh, committee member Hayam?
Yeah, my question has to do with the consolidation of, uh, neighborhood coalitions from seven to four. I'm getting a lot of questions about that, and I'm just curious how far into the weeds your committee got with that topic. Did you do a lot of analysis or was it just more of an input into the final map choice? I appreciate hearing any character characterization of your discussion, and I look forward to reading your report.
Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Chisholm and then go to Commissioner Kimora. Oh, actually, sorry. Commissioner Manhadas, was that your hand as well?
Um, I am showing up as, uh, Juanita Santana, so. Okay, sorry, so changing that. Uh, maybe go ahead and have Commissioner Chisholm go and I'll go after. I'm just moving my name here.
Okay, uh, well, Commissioner Chisholm, I did see your hand. Commissioner Manhadas, and then we'll do Commissioner Kimora. Uh, Commissioner Chisholm?
Great. Uh, I I don't think it informed our process at all whatsoever. Um, we didn't even know that was happening until extremely late in the process. Um, to the point that, well, she heard it, I think, directly from neighborhoods, that that was possibly happening. And we actually, uh, asked our staff to go back over to civic life and confirm that that rumor was true or untrue. I think it is, um, there may be reasons for civic life to go from seven to four. There may be reasons to change neighborhood association boundaries to match the districting boundaries here. But all of that seems to me to be completely bonkers to assign that to us. We did not in any way, uh, take the appropriate delivery of neighborhood services for the office of civic life. Into consideration for these maps. These maps are about representation. They're required to be contiguous and compact and of equal, um, a population. Um, there's. I can think of no reason why the neighborhood coalition should be of equal population. Um, if that's not the best way to deliver services to the public. Um, so, yeah, it it was, I would actually, it was very frustrating to hear late in the game. That, uh, that civic life was planning to completely upend the neighborhood association system based on the maps that we were designing. That had no reason, that was not, that was not a factor in our decision-making at all for how these these maps are built. And so the fact they're mirroring their maps supposedly on this map. To me seems a deeply flawed decision-making process. Sorry to be very blunt about that.
No problem. Uh, Commissioner Manhadas, did you want to weigh?
Yes, uh, I appreciate that opening. That was great. Um. Agreed that it didn't really factor into our process because it is still a proposal. We don't have any firm. Ground of that. It was also outside the scope of what we were looking at. And I think it's, it's really interesting. I wanted to, I'm really glad you asked a question because I've been thinking about this a lot. In terms of trying to anticipate how this transition, this transition is gonna earn unearth a lot of fears that folks have about. The system and about what the system could be, what it might look like, what's gonna happen with this. And I think part of it is, it's important for your group particularly to acknowledge that historically, the neighborhood. Associations, the district coalitions have been where people have felt like they have a voice. The whole history of that. Is grounded in how do we create an office so that people actually have a space to share their concerns because we don't have. A representative form of government. So all that to say is, I think these are valid fears. I think they're valid concerns to. To try to ask these questions about what's gonna happen to my neighborhood associations, what's gonna happen to the space where I have felt. Heard through the process, again, acknowledging that not everybody engages in that space and everybody feels turned through that process. There's a lot of. Issues there, but I think it's gonna be really important. Um, the other thing I do want to bring up too, because this is also a city issue, is that those spaces exist because of the. Infrastructure investment that has come from the city for that. So it's not like these just emerged out of nowhere. There's been a lot of investment there. And with that, uh, shift is gonna come again, a lot of questions. So I think it's just gonna be, need to be a thoughtful and slow process. Where a lot of listening happens, and I hope that it doesn't become a situation where it becomes. Uh, neighborhood district coalitions versus other forms of engagement. I think there's gonna need to be thinking around how to set up an ecosystem. Where you're creating space for folks to get involved in different ways, but aren't, uh, setting up a system where folks are feeling like they have to compete for space and resources. So I just think that acknowledging, um. A slow pace of change through that, people are, who are used to going to their neighborhood association to have their, their needs met and addressed. Are gonna continue to do that until they they become more familiar with the the current system. And again, those. That the neighborhoods, you know, associations have done a lot of work to engage people in their communities in different ways across many different issues. So I do think there's room for all of it, getting back to the previous question about. How we support engagement, how we think about civic participation. It's not a one size fits all process, um, but would really encourage sort of, um. Creative thinking around the pace of transitions. Um, but would really encourage sort of, um, creative thinking around the pace of transitions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kamora, could you round us out on this question?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to echo Commissioner Manhadas and Commissioner Chism in that this was a surprise. And we knew the transition was going to be difficult. I think civic life made their decisions kind of in a vacuum. And the city of Portland's people, I, I believe are really resilient and they will live through this. But I also think that it's a case of, again, there should have been more consideration given to a proposal that's going to affect so many people. Not that it's really going to end up changing a lot of stuff, because they will have to do some consolidation and, and, um, adjustment. But it shouldn't have come as a surprise, which it did. And I think that that's still a process that, that the city has not gotten their head around that. People don't like surprises. They would probably agree with anything as long as you told them well enough in advance and you explained why you did it. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, committee member Santana, I just wanted to double check. Did you purposely put your hand down or did you still have a question too?
Kind of warroing here, the computer.
Okay.
Yeah, really quick. Um, I, you know, listening to all of you and, um, one of the things that have come forward consistently several, in several occasions is the fact that there's not enough people being reached in the community or there were, who, neighborhoods who did not participate. Um, or were able to give feedback for whatever reason. Uh, based on that experience, I wanna ask you, what, if you have any ideas or recommendations or, uh, you can, uh, make in terms of if, what type of actions or what type of strategies should the city be implementing to facilitate the, uh, reaching those populations that are not being reached right now? Um, and I know that we have our work plan and the G-TAC, and so we are going to be doing work going out and meeting in the community, with the community. But I think that, just like you, I think that that effort is going to be very limited when you think in terms of the size of the Portland and the population, the diverse populations that need to be reached. And so, do, do you have any ideas about what other things the city should be doing in terms of policymaking to facilitate that work? Because it cannot be done all by a committee. I mean, we have our best intentions and we have the best, you know, willingness and excitement about doing as much as we can. But when you talk about the city and something that needs to be established as a system that is developed within the infrastructure of the city that changed that difficulty that we have facing for years and years and years.
Uh, thank you, committee member. So what we're gonna do is, uh, I would like to hear the questions from, uh, committee members. Uh, Madonna Pablo and, uh, Gamera Casanelli as well. And then we're gonna put those on the table, uh, restate the questions. And then maybe we have, uh, just some broader thoughts to help close us out for this portion. Cause I do wanna save some time to be sure that we can still, uh, reserve time to wrap up pieces that report back to. So, so be a C U nine United States owners. So I'm gonna get the last two questions and then restate them and then, um, bite broader feedback or, uh, broader responses. Committee member Madonna Pablo.
Yeah, I almost admitted. Um, I was looking at the, uh, feedback summary report and, you know, this is something that we've pointed out and we've seen, but like East Portland obviously didn't get a lot of public engagement. And, you know, you, some people aren't part of their neighborhood association. I recently moved there. I don't even know where mine is and I'm here, you know what I mean? Um, working class, English isn't their first language, transportation, childcare. But the forty people you did engage with, what were their sentiments? Because this is gonna be a huge change, I feel like, for East Portland, this whole representation. It's gonna give a lot of opportunity. So in my view, voter education is gonna be critical there because it's gonna be a huge opportunity for our communities. I just wanna know what was your sentiments because you were there getting that feedback firsthand and also fantastic map. I, I love the, the ways you put the variations. I just wanna, that was great and the, the, the things you've noted, so.
Thank you. Uh, committee member, the Meadow Casanelli.
Yes, thank you. Um, we've heard a lot about, um, community engagement, public listening. And I think a lot of people on G-TAC will also agree that we know that's a big, important piece of this. And I also heard there were some neighborhoods you didn't hear at all from. Um, I, this, hopefully this is an easy question, not difficult, but what neighborhoods were those? What groups or areas of town did you see not participate as much in the process for you guys? So that maybe we can make an extra effort, effort to include them in the process.
Thank you. So I'll restate the questions. So, um, first was in terms of policymaking, what strategies should the city be pursuing in order to foster deeper engagement, especially among populations within the city that are difficult to reach? And I believe that you spoke to this question a little bit earlier, but I think it was in the context of this process. And I believe, uh, committee member Santana's question is about broader, kind of broader outreach for the city at large. But you can correct me if I'm wrong, committee member. Um, so in terms of the folks that you were able to speak with directly and hear from in East Portland, um, given that they are often faced more barriers to engagement, what were the sentiments that you heard from folks in East Portland? Uh, that could be shared with the G-TAC. And then the third, what neighborhoods or groups, uh, didn't you hear from as much that the G-TAC could also, uh, focus on in terms of engagement, um, to bolster that overall? So all those kind of ta- tackling the engagement been slept from different perspectives. So I'll open up the floor and we'll start with Commissioner Ben Sickle Robbins, then go to Commissioner Sextina. I'll tag in pairs. And, uh, one second, Commissioner. Now, can you?
Um, so I would say with respect to East Portland, um, first off, I wanna say that I think we pretty uniformly heard across the city at all of our meetings really enthusiastic support for creating that district in East Portland. Um, I thought there was a lot of recognition that that part of our city has been underrepresented for so long and it's just about time. Everybody said that. Um, I, I think for, I think personally that, that there were neighborhoods who don't seem to be as engaged in the neighborhood association, uh, ecosystem at civic life, because we emailed out to all of the neighborhood associations. Some we heard back from, but others, it was like the email addresses weren't even correct. So I think there's, there's a, a lot of work that needs to get done at the city on that front. I think a lot of the neighborhoods who weren't, uh, directly impacted by the map, you know, they were where they probably thought they were gonna end up being and nothing was gonna change for them. So they didn't have an urgent need to come and, and be heard. Um, but one of the things I just wanted to talk about that I said at last, um, our last meeting was that it seems like, at least from my narrow vantage point of being on this commission, it seems like each commission is charged with doing community engagement and outreach when really the city as a whole should be doing this and have a very defined process that is not randomly done by one-off, uh, groups like us. We had nine months. There was no way we were going to do what needed to be done in the limited amount of time that we had. So it really needs to be a completely different approach that the city takes that covers everything that the city's trying to do that needs public feedback. Um, and then just a small thing that I think was, is worth considering is we did a session, um, at the Mirabella and there were like forty-five people who came to that session. And as I was doing that session, it made me think of all the congregant living situations of ver- of various kinds, not just senior living sish, but, um, uh, housing, uh, developments that exist all over. There are, all of these opportunities, that's a great opportunity to meet people where they live. Um, and a lot of those communities have gathering spots in those communities where you could set up, you know, whether it's information booths or a meeting or a pizza party or whatever it takes, uh, with childcare so that folks could not have to venture out across the city to two public hearings that happened in a district that spans fifteen miles, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we'll hear from Commissioner Sextina, followed by Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, so, I mean, so all that, it's always hard to follow Commissioner Ben Sickle Robbins. So much wisdom. But one of the things I noticed about our engagement processes, we had, so we had a lot of official meetings. So we had meetings like this, the hybrid meetings that we had, you know, weekly. And the, um, the meeting, the public hearings we had in July, we had about eight of those. But we, we did a lot of kind of like unofficial outreach. We each tapped our own connections. You know, I spoke on a panel that was hosted by ERCO. Commissioner Siegel talked about the meeting that was hosted by the Coalition of Communities of Color. I know like Commissioner Chism went on KBO, I think for a couple of hours. We all, there were, there were these other kind of unofficial events that happened throughout this process that were hosted by other organizations. So I was, I'm wondering if there would have been a way to make those official. Like, could we, you know, like, could we pay the Coalition of Communities of Color to have posted one of our, um, you know, like one of our listening sessions. I know we did that, like I know we had, you know, we had a listening session at Apano and we had one at SCI. And we did that, but did we, you know, did we contract with them to have organizers who could have reached into community and like brought people and, and, you know, arranged for the childcare or done things or gone to spaces that maybe like the congregate living space idea is another one. Um, because there was a lot of, there was a lot of other engagements that we did that was with groups, the folks that were much more diverse and different from the people who on their own came to our, um, our more official hearings. Um, for example, I remember going to the session that was held at Apano. And I think half the people there were from like the inner southeast neighborhoods. So people got in their cars and drove across town to go to a hearing that wasn't in their neighborhood because they knew about it, they read about it. I'm not sure how they found out about it, but they were like, you know, I'm very passionate about this issue and I'm going to get in my car, drive, drive across town to a hearing. We, I think we even have that experience in that meeting we had in, um, Portsmouth at, um, the, at New Columbia where a lot of the folks there came from Southeast to, to New Columbia to participate in a hearing, so, uh, but that wasn't my experience when we went to the, kind of the ones that were hosted by, um, community-based organizations or in other venues. So I, I'm just, I'm, one, I, that's something that's kind of been sticking in my mind. And I'm wondering if there's a way to, um, to make some of those more of kind of like the official hearings.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. And we're gonna start wrapping up this discussion and just note that in the agenda, we've kind of collapsed the, the transition handoff and the reflection and priority section, but we will still be talking about just the final report. So unless there are other comments from the commissioners to add to these, we'll have Commissioner Siegel, then Commissioner Wise, and then Commissioner Judd close us out. Commissioner Siegel.
I think of a trifecta. You know, uh, a lot of the comments, uh, that we, uh, just heard, uh, of other commissioners, uh, Commissioner Manhadas, you mentioned something before. I love the term about creating an ecosystem for involvement. Uh, that really resonated with me. Uh, something else did about communicating, uh, and how citizens can engage in civics. One thing that, uh, Commissioner Kamora and I certainly heard from a recent meeting of CCC was again, education, 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 outreach and then more education. And something that a number of communities have offered, uh, City of Tucson is one, City of Salem is another. Uh, it's a sort of a citizens academy. And, uh, uh, I was part of that, uh, with the City of Salem many years ago where basically, uh, the staff, uh, put on, uh, courses in various areas of town in, in having to do with what is stormwater management, why you should care and, uh, how to, uh, how government works. How to learn more about it, how to get involved. And, uh, it really could, uh, pave the way for maybe even a, a further partnership with, uh, Golden State University. In terms of, of being able to provide something of real value to the community, uh, over time. Uh, working with, uh, through the city, working with the county, uh, whatever it takes. Uh, education, engagement, outreach, make the city of Portland a city that works better. I'm done.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner Wise, followed by Coach Judd.
Uh, yeah, so I guess I'll first talk about, uh, East Portland, the East Portland District. I, I mean, and this kind of coincides with an earlier question around, you know, the level of engagement. As you can see in some of our comments, like, we had a lot of engagement in areas where, uh, people didn't like what was happening, right? And so I, it, it, I think the same thing could be said, uh, in reverse, right? Like, a lot of, uh, folks, and I mean, you, like, coming into this process, uh, I heard a lot about like making sure that we had East, uh, Portland representation. So it, you know, so I think part of the, um, I wouldn't even say lack of engagement, but you know, you, you saw, uh, lower engagement from similar areas. Because I mean, I, you know, I think we kind of knew coming into this, like, what, what the vibe was around, what needs to happen. Um, at least in that kind of like big way, right? And like those like overarching things. Um, and, and so I, I'm, I'm so very proud of, uh, the work that folks did in, in the engagement plan that folks helped us set up. Uh, but yeah, you know, uh, you, I, I think God lucky in that way. Um, and I, you know, I would also argue that by making sure that we were, uh, doing that intense work on the front end. Um, you know, uh, we calmed a lot of fears in, in the process. Uh, I think, you know, one of the last things I would have wanted to do is to, to aggravate, uh, a section of Portland that has continuously not been, uh, heard. Uh, and, uh, we, it, you know, I feel like we did a good job and addressed some of those concerns early on. Um, I will also say that in term, I, I mean, I, uh, I really like the idea of like, uh, doing more partnerships with, uh, community groups and, I mean, uh, uh, in some of the work that I do, uh, also partner with um, polling firms to do like focus groups and to like pay folks to come in and participate in like a two, three hour, you know, set of focus groups. And I think that that's also very fascinating, um, because you can test a lot of different things there, right? Like, you can test language, you could, you could, you could test kind of like, uh, uh, I, just like, like what other folks may be, uh, thinking. Uh, and make sure that you get a diverse, uh, set of, um, uh, of Portlanders as well or, or, you know, or gunnies in general. So, um, I would, you know, I, I would recommend, you know, really considering, uh, what a, uh, a contractor on focus groups would look like and even probably doing that with some of the community-based organizations as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise and Coach Judd.
Yeah, um, I think I'm gonna do this in reverse order. So where do we hear from? I think that we, we could have done, we could have heard more from, um, ethnic minorities. I think we could have heard more from those who are houseless and homeless, uh, impacted by the circumstances. Uh, I think we could have heard more from, um, uh, so, so, yeah, so I'll stop there. Oh, sorry, youth. I don't think we said enough from those members of the communities that are between the voting ages of, of eighteen and then thirty, thirty-five. We make it thirty-five. So I think there's plenty of opportunity for those groups with a great, but but it needs. Uh, how do you go in line, I'll come back to that in a second. Um, from East Portland, uh, you know. What I heard from community members in East Portland is. Uh, it wasn't necessarily about um. You know, the voting issue, it was more about. Uh, it's a certain level disenfranchised, this feeling as if, what does it mean for me, right, and. The folks I spoke to were living in affordable housing, and so I'm out here, but I don't feel necessarily connected to this community. So I feel more connected to that community, but I got forced out here, so how do I get engaged in the process that gives me greater control. Over my livelihood, over my well beingness, right, and so that's what I was, I was, was the thing that resonated most for me uh from from East Portland. Um, and and an understanding that um. Because of that, how do you raise the level of of engagement and voter participation, right? But but it's 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 stage, right, so it's gonna go to my my point to you. Um, which is in general. I don't think there's a single strategy, right, I think it's, but I I do think that there are some things that. Uh, you know, coming out of corporate America and being part of uh business transformational teams. But um, I think municipalities can do. Uh, one of them is capacity building, really taking an assessment of. What skills do we, do we have amongst our on this committee? And most importantly, what skills are missing, right? Businesses will quickly go and assess what skills might be missing because there's an incentive, there's a strong incentive. Because they want to make those profit, want to make those dollars, so they're willing to take the time to invest. To get the skills that they don't have, they want to better, better compete. I think uh unless you have a step or a group full of people who are uh community uh engagement experts. Then you should go out and get one, right, uh, we had a chance to to speak with um, uh, one who came in and spoke at SEI, Jamil Tremor. Who uh has a vast amount of expertise, and uh she's of an ethnic minority community that can bring that lived experience as well. So I think taking that, doing that capacity building, really assessing what skills that we have, what skills are we missing. Looking at our processes, how do we communicate, before you can do, you know, uh voter education. You've got to have communication down, right, so how do we have a network of 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 folks? That uh are skilled at communicating at this grassroots level, right, and again, going back to assessing your skills and looking at your processes. Um, uh, so I I think. Just, and understanding this, that it's not a short term solution. Don't view the your turn as the end of the work, right? It's got to be a multi-phase process where as you're voting capacity in year one. How do you then scale up in year two, but what does that transition looks like? Who should be the accountable folks there, what resources will be needed to carry to the next level, continue that transitional process, right? So I think really taking the time. One of the reasons why we wanted to have you guys here is because we didn't want to make mistake of not offering. This communication, this dialogue, of offering an opportunity, scale against what we've learned and what we've done. And to do that, that handoff and that transition, so I think really being intentional about. That capacity building, looking at it from a multiple phase process of of building skills, building capabilities. Uh, and doing that transition where you can hand off to the next. Group of folks that come in and do it with a with a high level of attentionality of, this is how we're gonna do the type of scaling that's necessary, so that. We're not just thinking about the twenty twenty-four election, but we're looking at. The the twenty twenty-six and what is the next district will look like at twenty thirty, we've done some things differently. Right, we're aware that we missed an opportunity, yes. What these voting issues have done is given uh uh folks an opportunity to feel disenfranchised. That opportunity gets wasted if we don't take the time to execute and really be intentional about what the what what the steps are required. Uh, to transition well, and again, it goes back to that capacity building, ensuring that uh you're reaching out to the. Those voices that haven't been traditionally heard uh with a with a high level of attention now, right?
Thank you. Coach and Judge wrapping us, bringing it all together. Commissioner Siegel, can I ask you to put your hand down for this one? Just a friendly reminder.
Of course.
Friendly reminder, um, so we'll have about. Ten to fifteen minutes or so to just kind of wrap up the discussion to specifically around, um, we'd like to focus. For the reporting purposes on how you wrestle with communities of common interest. Um, and. We also think that this part of the discussion will also be helpful for members of the GTEC as well, and so thank you for your questions in the last discussion, and we'll. Uh, ask that you also share for, for members of the IDC. Um, you do have a survey in your inboxes, so we'd ask you to fill those out to be sure that we can also capture any additional reflection. For the staff too, but for the discussion purposes, we really would like to focus on um, just what were you wrestling with? With communities of common interest, I know that this came up a little bit earlier in the discussion. But based on the criteria and communities of common interest, what, how did those manifest in terms of mapping themes and your decisions for the map? And we'll start with Commissioner Chisholm. Followed by Commissioner Manhadas. Commissioner Chisholm.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a tough challenge, um. You know, if I was king of the world uh and drawing uh some of the new system, I would have probably gone with twelve individual districts. I like the rank choice, like the multi-member, but. You know, if you had twelve individual districts, you could, for example, have a Saint John's district and a Selwood district and. You know, a Monavilla district or something like that, and you'd have tighter geographic places. Four districts citywide are a very blunt instrument. Um, and so when I started this process, like, okay. What community has been underrepresented? And for me, immediately, immediately, I think it's for everyone here, went to East Portland. It's a very large community. We're talking about, you know, there are um four school districts in the city of Portland, and three of them are in East Portland. Um, that's where I started, uh, I was thinking about the school district communities. And then the overall collection of everything east of two oh five has been so dramatically underrepresented for so long. You know, um, Commissioner Fleischman was saying earlier that there's lots of kinds of community of interest. That exists in the in the city that aren't geographic, and that's absolutely true. The challenge is when you're drawing a map, you have to find the ones that are represented in some way geographically. So I started a lot of this process early on as well, looking at how. Uh, ethnic distribution works across city, racial, ethnic distribution works. And it turns out Portland is not particularly segregated, um, we have large numbers of of folks of African Americans across North Portland and and East Portland. Um, you know, Asian Americans, uh, do, there's going to be some, something of a cluster. East of eighty-second and south of division, you know, a slight concentration, there are other concentrations as well. It was, it was really hard, this is not Los Angeles, um, or Atlanta or Detroit, where there's, you know, there's a street and everybody knows. Different on one side or the other, um, and so the hard part of that means it's really hard to deliver. Um, electoral representation to communities of color, uh, because they're so spread out across the city. So then it becomes really a question of like, how how do you, how do you do what you can, uh, and I think we've done a reasonably good job. Uh, as as best as we can, uh, to find those communities of common interest, it is a hard, hard problem. Is it neighborhoods, is it larger school districts, is it ethnic communities and so forth, so. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, we'll have Commissioner Manhadas, followed by Commissioner Kurma, then Judd and Fleischman. Commissioner Manhadas.
Yeah, thanks, Adam, um, I spoke to this a little bit in our last meeting, um, about how on. There's no clear, certain definition for communities of common interest. And there never really will be, it's kind of a, it's a messy term, it's a term of art. And it really is, I mean, there's, there's sort of a double edged sword with that, that's a, it's an opportunity for folks to actually self identify, so I think. In that, it's important that we do look at the data, we look at demographic data, we look at everything at our disposal, we look at the numbers. Um, and it's, that's step one, it's critical in step two and and moving forward through that from there. That we actually work with folks to make meaning of that data and give folks space to self determine. And I think that's really, that's not just a one off, oh, does this sound right to you, you know, check yes or no. There really, it does need to be a process for folks to self identify through that. Um, so that we're actually going through the process of checking our own assumptions, checking our own biases and not. Making assumptions about specific communities, so I think that's always going to be a big part of this process, I think, um. What we're looking at now in the map that we just approved is a reflection. Of how folks are currently self identifying based on the current system that we have and how people have currently been engaged in the process. That's going to change, so by the time we get to twenty thirty and people become more familiar with communities of interest, people are engaged in that way. People start to um coalesce around different political identities as they have more opportunities for representation over the next handful of years. They're going to start to organize themselves differently, and I think it's really critical that we don't. Uh, put people in a box, right, or we don't say, well, here are the categories, but really keep that. And space for people to come to the table and say, well, this is my, you know, community of common interest around hikers in this area who care a lot about. This wetland, right, so it's, it's gonna be that messy, and I think that's really important. Um, but I do think it's important to document and process or. Document what we are hearing from folks along the way so that we can actually learn and see how those communities are evolving over time. Um, and how they're changing, and I think that's gonna be a really um. Interesting part of this whole experiment in Portland is how people start to identify through this process, so I do think when you do have single member districts and you do have very. Small units, uh, people, there's not a, you know, there's not a lot of, in in terms of what people can do with communities of common interest, it's a little different when you have larger districts like this, so. Um, I would say, you know, capturing what we can in terms of how people are identifying at this stage, um. And remembering that it's gonna be a messy process, but making sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to not looking. At people as like, you know, numbers on a data sheet, but actually doing the work of engaging with people to to give them the room to identify. It's gonna be important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Kurma.
Thank you, and Commissioner Manhadas, that was an excellent summary of the fact that it is, A, terribly messy. B, and we have to listen to people's self identification, because more than. A neat box, people don't fit into neat boxes, and we have to recognize it is. We made certain decisions, if those are not decisions that you agree with, change the process. But at this point in time, give us a chance to move forward with this, I think it's really important that we we agree. It isn't a perfect process, I don't think there's a set of data from the census is perfect either, however, we have to work with what we got. So I think as Commissioner Manhadas says, people self identify, and we have got to show them that there is room. For us to adjust that self identification as a criteria, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Coach Judd followed by Commissioner Fleischman.
I agree that, um. You have to self identify. So, fight, self identify. Um. As a African American, not a courser owner. How do you then relate to? So I can go and create other community members that have that same. Identification, then what next? I think that one of the, the, a bigger question is. What are the, what are the priorities, because we, we, civic engagement, which you, seems to be what you're really trying to understand is. How do you prioritize those who have these common interests and 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 what those, what those quote unquote priorities are, so that. If you're in East Portland. Uh, how does a community come together around a set of priorities, I think, ha, giving them now uh a a frame to work with. That will help, right, so you you can, you can have listening pool and do that capacity building we just talked about, so that. Those issues, concerns that uh persist within that community, well, those, those, that, that great some communities. Can uh give us a sense of relevancy and prioritization. I think one of the the challenges that, um, you know, Portland has, uh, the nation has, how does that work, how do you, how do you work together? To to, so that I can listen to you, you live in uh Selwood. And I live in, in Haydale, and we can talk about. Uh, the things that are priority four, and like, and you can feel assured that uh my priorities are kind of aligned with yours, and then. How do we stack this, because at some point, we got to figure out. Resource allocations, uh, and then that becomes a key, right, so it's the, the community, communities of common interest is just part of it. How, is there a process, is there something that allows us to uh bring together these priorities and then sort of rank them? Like, that's where the the challenge with this, the, with the, with the transition government, but it is going to have to confront and come up with the. Plan to kind of commit to match that.
Thank you, Commissioner Judd. Commissioner Fleischman, I think you had your hand up. Are you feeling kind of everything was covered?
I did, but I'm really satisfied by what my fellow commissioners.
Um, are there any final thoughts before we close, Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I have, I have one final thought, I think in terms of, this has come up in previous meetings, but hasn't been named tonight, I think one of the big. Things that I certainly grappled with is the feedback during the public hearing sessions that really named like. Portland as a community of common interest, and how do we actually focus on what we have. In common or even have these conversations about communities of common interest in a way that doesn't divide us, but actually. Is an invitation to come together, um, and so I just want to say that really explicitly in this space as well, because I think in terms of as we are handing to the council GTEC and. This new slate of people who will be elected next fall, I mean, I think overwhelmingly that has been. Um, something that I think we've all heard in terms of how can we make sure that this is an opportunity for increased cooperation and increased like. Collective sense of of shared identity and opportunity for for something better for our city.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. All right, um, by any kind of final brief thoughts on either criteria or communities of interest that you'd like to share in this session? But also there will be time for just. Individual reflection via that survey and any other information you'd like to share with the staff directly. Well, I want to thank you for all your time, not just tonight, not just in the last month, but literally all the months and hours that you put in. Your personal time with one another, just thinking about these issues and really wrestling with them, there's so much thoughtfulness and intention. Uh, I just wanted to name that, and thank you for your service. It's much appreciated, and I know that others have shared that too. Um, Sophia, as we close out, I think we just have one slide to review in terms of next steps before we adjourn. Okay, so. We just wanted to share um beyond the tenure of the IDC, and I don't want you crying or misting up. But okay, you can if you want, um. Beyond tonight's meeting, tomorrow the staff will move to file the district plan that you approved um adopted earlier this evening. They'll file that district plan with the city elections officer. On uh, if it's possible, as many of you as possible, we invite you to complete the exit survey by August twenty eighth, so that's a week from now. Um, and then in September, the staff and flow analytics will draft the district commission report with support of volunteers to review. And again, if you'd like to volunteer, um, you can reach directly out to the staff, um, Sophie specifically. I just saw it in the chat, um. And you you're, you're all invited if you'd like to contribute in any way that you can, so. With that, we are adjourned. Again. Thank you, Adam.